Okay, so we are here today for the demonstration. Um, I will go ahead and I'm going to, if there's questions, I'm going to allow two questions from each side. We'll answer those questions and then we will proceed with the demonstration. So is there anyone who has any questions?
So that we know exactly what we're doing. Uh, my understanding is that we will do the same demonstration that we performed for you. Same location, same firearms, that correct?
Yes. Any other questions from the gun club? Okay, seeing none. Any questions from that position, Jack?
The commissioner's gonna be at a residence down there to here. Are you, are you, are you gonna just be up here?
Okay, we'll present that, um, once I've answered all the questions, then I will let you know where I was at the last demonstration that I attended.
You know, I'm asking about today, are the commissioners gonna be at someone's home that will be affected by this to observe from that position?
So if you'll give me an opportunity, I will tell you where I went last time, so that you will know what we're going to do this time.
Okay.
Okay, um, so we have two people here that have a question, and we're doing two questions on each side. So if you guys would like to kind of combine your questions and one of you answer in order to be fair, that would be great. So we'll give you a second to do that, if you guys want to.
Two questions will cover the questions that we asked.
Well, we're just doing, we're here for a demonstration, you guys.
We are here for a demonstration, but you have told us nothing about what this demonstration is to be about. And the two of you have just had an exchange that we have no idea what it was about, because we were not present when guns were fired for you. So we have no idea what he is saying about the same guns. We need to know exactly what this process is going to be. And by the way, I want to know who and when this special meeting was called.
And I'd like to know, have you already decided on the reconsideration?
Thank you very much. Okay, so now, the last demonstration that I attended, what was done, I walked up to the mountain, I looked at the site after that. Um, the people that came were up there as well, they showed me the firearms that were going to be shot. There was a radio, a handheld radio that they had, one of the gun club members came down with me, we had a handheld radio, we had cell phones as well. Went up to the mountain, I walked back down, took my radio, I asked them to provide a shot. As soon as I got to the highway, they did that. Then after that, I said, "Now I'm going to go to the ruins."
How do you know they shot?
Because I heard it on the cellphone, the radio, and then I heard, I told them when to shoot when I put it down.
So you heard the shot?
Yes. Yes, I did. After that, um, then I asked them to please, "Let's, I'm gonna take me to the ruins." They took me to the ruins, again, the same process, by radio and by cellphone, "I'd like you to shoot," which they did. And I could hear it, I could hear it on the cellphone, I could hear it on the radio.
At, at, at the ruins?
Yes. After that, then I went over to, um, Camino de Aragon, and I drove up the road and at the fence, right at the gate of Mr. Mora's home, I parked out there, and did the exact same thing, radio, cellphone, asked for them to shoot, I could hear it on the radio and I could hear it on the cellphone, so that I knew that it would occur. I want to do the exact same thing today, again, this is your demonstration to us, if you have anything to add, this is going to be the time to do so.
So ma'am, uh, my understanding is that there's no new information that can be done, we can only repeat what we did for you.
What is the purpose of this?
The purpose of it is so that everybody can hear the same thing.
Some people don't hear the same.
Madam Chair, is this being recorded?
No, it's not.
What is the purpose of everybody hearing the same thing? What is the purpose of this?
Well, we're gonna try to be able to.
Please, Madam Chair, come over here and talk like a man.
Mr. Mora?
No, that is not necessary.
I am recording, yes sir. I'm recording, I'm recording, yes sir.
Now, why don't we take a few minutes, since there are obviously some heated feelings on this side? I don't feel comfortable with that kind of conversation going on, so we will wait until law enforcement can arrive, so that commissioners and each side does have some kind of protection and kind of to keep the order. So, um, if you're ever feeling uncomfortable or if you're trying to run for the council here, either you can radio, or someone from the county department can come down, or I will, um, I'll sheriff White ask them to come and support you.
I think it'd be advisable to use the sheriff's office that way, they're totally.
True.
So I will do that, I'm not gonna take any further questions, we're just waiting for a representative from the sheriff's department to arrive, then we will proceed to do the demonstration.
I wanna go on record, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's being recorded.
That you're overstepping your bounds here, just because of this thing happened, that's something you have to react and call the sheriff.
I don't think I'm reacting, I'm trying to be. I answered your question. So I hear folks saying things better.
So that's what this, you're trying to get yourself.
Now, you're putting words away now, but I'm telling you, the word here for the demonstration, the demonstration is done, I will ask for a group of us to vote by all, whether or not I will, so I will tell you what the record is, that I would like to vote, but I will refer to our council to get counsel as to whether or not I will vote. Would you go back to my original? And now we're gonna wait until someone, uh, 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 point. May I have a motion?
And I will urge you.
Excuse me, I'm calling.
Unmoved that we have a recess into the sheriff's department, get your.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second? Okay, is the motion seconded, there will be no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Do you need it? And so I would like to send a motion to go back into order, is the motion?
No, no, go back into order.
Is there a second? Is the motion seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And we'll now proceed with the demonstration. It's not being recorded, it's being, we do have a recorder. I mean, it's what records the best of our ability, I just think, you know.
Then we, we suggest, uh, this is a meeting, Madam Chair. This is a meeting, and it was obviously an agenda, a special meeting, and we held here today, and therefore we should record it. And, and therefore, if it's not, we should adjourn.
It's being recorded, so.
It's not being recorded officially, but the county, and she just said that it didn't pick up.
I'm bearing teeth on any recording, you guys, so I, I respect your opinion, sir, but let's proceed with the demonstration.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is absolutely wrong, absolutely wrong, for this commission to be acting in this manner. This is absolutely wrong, this is a decision of discretion on your part. So therefore, I suggest, uh, the adjournance, apparently, that you can get your ducks in order, and give the people a chance to be, uh, 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 county personnel, and make this official meeting pass you, and as required, by the open, uh, uh, meeting.
We were advised by council that we are not in violation of the open meeting act, and because of that, I feel that we're in compliance, it's being recorded by a private citizen, it's being recorded by our county manager, and we're taking notes as well, so I feel confident that we should be okay, and I apologize, that's not going to satisfy the other side, but it made my decision as a chair, and it feels like.
Let me, uh, for a question, do you have a written opinion by council?
I don't have it with me, but I.
What, do you have a written opinion?
Do we have a written opinion? Do we have it by?
On, on what? A written opinion on what?
I go on the record to get a copy of this, an opinion.
What, what kind of opinion?
Sir?
What kind of opinion, really, this is for?
The opinion that the chair claims council.
That this is compliant with open meetings act? This, if there was a published agenda, um, in excess of 24 hours in advance for this meeting, so it's compliant.
Why isn't it being properly recorded with county personnel?
We do have county personnel.
We are county personnel.
But it's not being properly recorded, as it normally is, that a meeting before the commissioners, it is thus. As he says, it's being recorded by private citizens, you may be a private citizen, or if you're citizen, you're not recording it. For the favor to represent this, because she supports that name, so what she has, is incredible. We have no idea what she puts in, what she can raise, what she can't.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mora, again, I'm, I'm just gonna proceed with the demonstration, so can we go ahead and do so now, please? Madam Chair, I ask for.
Who said it, the commissioning?
We make all decisions after.
So there's, there's, it's a record that says, the commission voted in favor of.
I don't remember the vote, but all of that is available in the public record, and so I'd like to see that now. Whoever is in charge of doing this demonstration, please take us to where we're going to see the demonstration, and I apologize, Mr. Mora, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I'm asked with the question, that's my ability, we're here to see, and here's the demonstration, and we're going to do that now. We will give you an opportunity at the next commission meeting, if you'd like to ask us any further questions, you can be to the bench.
Is that, is coming Wednesday?
Yes. Madam Chair, if it's not on the agenda, of course, uh, next week? It can be put on the agenda.
How? I mean, just summarily?
We had time to put it on the agenda, legally.
But it's already out?
It's draft. We always put out our drafts before we begin to apply the agenda.
So are you saying that this could be in the meeting's agenda?
It could be, if you wanna ask some questions about it.
No, I'm asking the commission as an obligation to be careful with the public and have an open forum meeting, whether the public can participate.
That we always have an opportunity for the public to comment, we have a two-minute period on every agenda specifically to allow any sources to come and ask us any question or their question.
Oh, but we, we'll send people, and we'll send people, we need to be able to see her.
And you have been heard, sir, and I feel like I've, I've exceeded that today, so I have to, you know, I work for all of you, we all do, but I, my father-in-law's waiting, getting released from the hospital today, and it's my job to pick him up, so I'm asking to please begin the demonstration, so that we can continue what we need to do, so whoever is leading us.
We're ready to fire. Do you wanna walk down here?
Does anybody wanna walk up to the site? I've been to the site.
Screenie, are you up there?
If don't we want?
I think I'd like to send, before you fire, I'd like to send someone from the gun range to go up, and anybody else who'd like to go up, so that they can see the weapons and they can see the people up there. So if you'll start heading up, thank you.
Steve, you're gonna go, not Jordan.
Yeah, I'm gonna go up.
No commissioner is gonna be stationed at a private dwelling that will be affected by this demonstration.
Okay, we're gonna go, not in the population, but through the area. Yes, the one right in last year.
I mean, it seems to me that if those are the people that are also concerned, that that's where the observation should be made.
Well, I, I think, if I may, Madam Chair, I think at the front, at the very first, she said that our first demonstration would be here by the road. And then we will proceed to residences, you know, and then we will hear the gun range, I mean, gunfire, you know, it'll be terrible there. I, I for one have not, have not heard the gunfire yet. I am one of the ones who will make the decision if it is. I hear here that, you know, the mayor's, I hear over here you shouldn't be able to hear. I have to make the decision on this, and I for one want to make the best decision.
Well, that's why I was asking, that it should be observed from the locations that are gonna be.
Where is it?
Three Canyon, I'm located there.
Where, that's where I live, we've been paying attention.
I've heard what you said, it's just right over here.
I don't think you're in town though. It's, it's less than a half a mile. It's a less than a half a mile.
Whoever would like to go up, if they can go up, goes for a tentative, who else would you think of, anybody else that desires to go up? And is there a radio and a cellphone down here?
Understanding is that this demonstration is to repeat what we did for you, uh, what they're discussing is talking something, in addition to that, if we're going to do that, we need to confirm with our lawyer, okay, because that was how we're understanding.
But why don't, why don't we first ask why your lawyer is, while they head up the mountain, and we can still hear what I heard right here, it's as if.
Do you have anything, do you know how far the range is from here?
It's, it's like over the ridge, it's like there's.
Yes. This moving, this step, this step.
So how many yards?
If we just, if we, if we get upstairs, and with the radio that you're.
Yes, that's right. If you want to, you want to hear, well, actually, you have this.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so, yeah, we have to get out, on the handhelds, we have to get out there.
My place to get those.
I thought you should be very close to you, just let us know when resources are in place.
I must have, they must have invited us.
This is a private citizen, I totally. Just thought I'd mention that. Oh, you were so busted. Yeah, Heath is my idol, he kicked the bed over here Wednesday, he is the man, he is totally the, he's the man. He kicked the bed over here Wednesday, Heath is the man.
Oh, yeah. He did. He did real good.
He did.
Yeah, he was, uh, leaving just. It was good.
Good deal.
Did I let you know? I've seen you this year. No, it's not a ranch, it's just a house with a lot of acres, it's actually shelter.
Answer, answer here, everything.
So that we have the guns.
No, no, I didn't go back. How hard is it to get a permit for a squirt gun?
Yeah.
It depends, there's, there's, uh, it's part of parts, uh, control of the violence, that never, that works. But the victim may, may have been paid off by insurance, that is, more, they're no longer, they don't want the claimant here. Those, those type of stuff, a little more.
But the others are wonderful.
But that'll be two years now.
Where do you store it? So some of the stuff that is, I mean, I mean, all that's going to be.
Yeah, the other stuff, you know, we, we packed it to the outside store.
Where's Joy with the camera? Are you gonna go over there, or stay there? Gonna stay there with the camera? Okay. We're gonna have, uh, Mr. Chung announce what will be shot first.
I will now radio them to fire two rounds from a .45 pistol, .45 ACP, which is, of course, at the high end of pistols that, insofar as sound is concerned. Okay, at this point, would you fire two rounds from the .45 ACP?
Are you ready for the two?
Yeah, shoot the two rounds at the .45 pistol.
We just had a car. Once we'll be going by. Well, but nevertheless, for this demonstration.
Would you now get the two, the rifle, the .300 mag ready, and let me know when you're ready?
Ready, uh, okay.
The commissioners are ready, would you please fire the three hundred mag twice? Lani, Ava? Okay, Lani, we'll call you back when we get to the place. Okay, folks, we're gonna go to Ava and follow the commissioners.
Are you, like, recessing and starting back, or is it still rolling?
I didn't say that. I'm scared of her. It's right down. And I know that I already deleted the conversation.
It's... Folks should be very close to you, just let us know when resources are in place. They should be at the moment, please.
This is a private citizen, I totally love you. Just thought I'd mention that. Oh, you were so busted! Yeah Heath is my idol, he kicked butt over here Wednesday, he is the man, he is totally the, he's the man. He kicked butt over here Wednesday, Heath is the man.
Oh yeah.
Mm-hmm.
He did real good.
He did.
Yeah, he was a... Up on par. It was good.
Sweet, good deal.
Did I let y'all know?
I've seen you this year. No, it's not a ranch, it's just a house with a love maker. It's actually shelter.
Answer, answer, say anything.
No, no, I need to go back.
It's been a while.
How hard is it to get a permit for a squirt gun?
Yeah. I did, I did kinda wait there. Open ended, where are you going? Yeah.
I'm scared of her.
I didn't say that.
Well, I think about that one.
It's right down.
I'm scared of her.
It depends, there's, there's a... It's part of parts of, kind of, items that never, never been paid off by insurance. But the people may, may have either been paid off by insurance. So, they're no longer, they don't want to claim that gear. Those, those type of stuff are a little more... But that'll be two years now. You've got the reason, you have that up there.
Where do you store it?
Uh, in the evidence.
So, some of the stuff that is, I mean, I'm going to, all that's going to be in the...
Yeah, the other stuff, you know, we've, we've packed into the outside storage.
Everybody? We stand by, the, uh, the officers.
That's about here.
Ready, uh, okay. Ready, commissioners? The commissioners are ready, would you please fire the three hundred mag twice? I will now radio them to fire two rounds from a forty-five pistol, forty-five ACP, which is, of course, at the high end of pistols that, insofar as sound is concerned. Okay, at this point, would you fire two rounds from the forty-five ACP tree? Copy?
Yes, sir. Copy? Yes, sir. Are you ready for the two?
Yeah, shoot the two rounds at the forty-five pistol.
We just had a car go by.
One should be going by all the time.
Well, but nevertheless, for this demonstration...
Would you now get the two, the rifle, the three hundred mag ready and let me know when you're ready?
Ready, uh, okay.
Ready, commissioners? The commissioners are ready, would you please fire the three hundred mag twice? Lani, Ava?
Yeah.
Okay, Lani, we'll call you back when we get to the place. Okay, folks, we're gonna go to Ava and follow the commissioners.
Are you, like, recessing and starting back, or is it still rolling?
We're gonna go on our own vehicles.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, we're just about ready, you guys ready for the forty-five? Now, Lani, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone so the commissioners can hear our conversations. Okay, Steve, you asked the shooter to get the forty-five ready? Yes, tell me when he's ready? Okay, the commissioners are ready, please have you shoot the forty-five two times? And, um, I'm gonna ask the... Two more times? They're reloading. Okay, we're ready, go. Just fired two times. Okay, now would you get, would you get the rifle ready?
Get the rifle ready.
As soon as when you're ready. Okay, fire when you're ready. All right, be back. Okay, we're gonna go to the next location, we'll call you back. We'll call you back. Nice day, then, uh, meditation.
Is everyone else there?
Hey, Lani, we're at the last location. The forty-five ready?
Is Steve there? Can you...
Steve, are you there? Hi?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, are you there?
Yeah, that's the station.
Oh, okay, Steve. Okay, Steve, we're ready. Three, uh, fire forty-five at one. They want just five, two rounds.
Yes, Steve, just turn that on the speakerphone.
Steve, Steve? Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, with, with the two forty-five, just fire.
Yeah.
Okay, would you get the three hundred mag ready? And tell us when you're ready?
Yeah, sure.
You guys ready?
Ready.
Okay, Steve, fire it low. One just fired. Steve, for the two rounds, the three hundred mag just fire?
Yeah, the three hundred round, it just fired.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna...
Like you said, it meant, they said it meant so people, the three of us. Well, they're looking possible for one, secondly, I mean, I don't, I would respect the commissioners from Sora, Socorro County, if they had to make a decision in our county that they don't make decisions for them, they don't make decisions for us. Um, the residents that are here certainly are just as important because they're citizens of the United States, um, and they're just as important. I really don't believe that if they were a mission district that is not towards county mission district, they'd make a decision. I feel like this is, was elected to represent District Three, and I feel like I've been pretty fair in the selection of where I went. And with all due respect to the residents of Socorro County, and out of respect to the citizens of the United States, I really don't want to go there. Had there been two people that wanted to go on, I would have went, but since there's not enough votes to go there, I would decline. There's also, is there a second? I think it's, I think they all know, they may or say I...